We're going to call the regular meeting of the Lepore County Council for February 22nd to order at 6:00 PM and we'll have a moment of silence for Eugene Lasco, the ISP officer that was killed yesterday while doing his job. So if we could all stand for the pledge.
Mr. Mullenauer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Auditor, the role, please.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilwoman Graham Rosa.
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Garner.
Present.
Councilman Yagelski.
Present.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Present.
And Councilman Novak.
Present.
All seven members present.
Who's controlling the volume on the TV? Can somebody turn that up a little bit, please? Approval of the February 22nd agenda. We have a couple of additions that I just, and I know there's a couple other amendments also, but after the approval of the agenda, we're going to insert approval of the minutes from January 25th meeting. Under correspondence, Commissioner Haney, I believe, has a letter to the council. And then Mr. Cunningham would like to add a resolution to write off at the top under ordinances and resolutions. And then on the second page, we're going to add Resolution 2021-3. It's the one supporting teachers that everybody received a copy of. Then as we go down under new business, where it's consider approval for the council president's authority to hire or replace positions, the animal shelter, that should be due to the replacement of the animal shelter director, the animal control officer, he was promoted to that position. So that's the position we're actually giving him permission to fill. And then the building department, permission to fill vacancy with the appointment of Mike Pulan from, I think he was in MS4 or wherever he was at, that's the position that we're now, we give them permission to fill. So with that, is there any other changes or additions?
I have one.
To the, yes?
I believe it's proper that under appropriations, transfers, and requests, we have a Lepore County EMS, Andrew McGuire, that was an issue that was tabled. And since it was tabled, it belongs under old business. And then it gets untabled, and then we can discuss it at that point.
All right. So you've heard the changes to tonight's agenda. Is there any questions or additions? Yes. Okay, all right, all right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
We have a motion and a second motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mrs. Graham Rosa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
I'm sorry, was there a nay there? Was that all aye?
There was an aye.
It was an all aye. Okay, thank you.
Next is approval of the minutes from the January 25th meeting.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Second by Mr. Yagelski. Is there any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven oh. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody from the public or on Zoom that would like to speak, please state your name.
Good evening, councilmen. It's great to be here. My name is Joe Corr. I live at 3768 North 525 West, Lepore County. Thank you for taking the time. Kenny, did you get a copy of this?
Did you like the copy? Did you follow it?
Yeah. Well, I take just a minute to give you an update on the Michigan City-Lepore County courthouse project. I'll give you all a copy. If you look at the first page, what you're looking at there, you're on the second floor, looking down through to the first floor. Now there's a basement underneath the first floor yet. One of the reasons I wanted to come and come here is to tutor hard a little bit and in the advantage that between the council and the commissioners, when they decide to vacate that courthouse, you saved a lot of time and a lot of money by doing that. Okay, so you understand. We've only been about six months into the project, got about a year and two months, three months to go about this time next year is when the completion date is set. As you go through this and you look at the historical part of this building, what you're looking at here is concrete, that's really concrete. This was done many, many years ago. I don't know exactly how old the building is, but trust me, the concrete we're pouring today is very strong, but it's not this concrete. Okay, it's been a long time. When you go through the project in the upper roof structure, now that it's completely gutted and cleaned out, they use a forming system and then they put red tile, hollow red tile, oak clay tile, as their structure. And what they would do in them days, they would turn around and chop off the top of the structure. The blocks were held up by forms. They chop off the top of it, they put the rebar wherever the columns or the beams, wherever it had to be to create the strength of the building. When you go through there and you see this completely gutted, there isn't any of that. That's been destroyed or in bad shape for as long as this building's been standing there. It's in very, very good shape. You get to the second page, you'll see you can't, it's hard for you to see here, but this is the ceiling I'm talking about that was done out of the clay tile. Not only was it a structural thing that they did there, but also it's how they soundproofed and fireproofed the building in them days. It served a lot of purposes. Then when you get to the third page, you'll see the new building going up, structural precast. The structural precast is, the reason it's structural is because it's buried, the steel's buried on the outside precast walls. That saved the county a bunch of money by being able to redo that, redesign it, so your structure could sit on the precast walls. I don't know how many of you have been down there, but right now the building is up two floors. There's one floor going on top of that yet. We're not completed, so. Then the last picture is the foundations that had to be reinforced, made larger to carry what we're doing in a new and existing courthouse. You can see the forms that's sitting down in the basement. It's quite unique. On the very last page, you see some structures and things that we're doing, putting a new addition onto your building. So one of the reasons I want to come here is, is to offer to you folks, if you get set up, I'd love to, when it warms up, take you on a tour of the courthouse. It's a little bit of disadvantage to do it now, only because we don't have adequate stairs. I'd have to take you up a ladder and I'm not going to let you do that. Okay? But you really need to get up and see how this building was put together years ago. And you're going to be amazed at the new building going next to it. One last thing I wanted to talk about a little bit is the BIM process that we used when we did the hospital out of 94. That is a process where all the mechanicals, electrical, mechanicals, and everything is put in a BIM process, the three-dimensional, and it's all coordinated. On your new building, that was done. It couldn't be done on the old building. But a new one has, so what does that mean? Means that when the guy comes in and puts the HVC ducts up here, the fire protection guy runs the great big pipes, he comes over here, electrician comes down here, and it's all sequenced. It's sequenced in a way that it saves a lot of time, a lot of effort, the way it was done when I was superintendent this building and the room you're sitting in right now. Those decisions had to be made by the superintendent. And trust me, we didn't make all the right ones. But with this BIM process, this has really cleaned it up. And not only has it cleaned it up, it allows us to be able to put a building like this together in a pre, you imagine a precast for your courthouse building right now. Not one of them pieces are not going to fit. That's because of BIM.
Right.
Your heat ducts that are coming in, they're already insulated and put together modular or wrapped in plastic. So you don't get any environmental concerns at all, all your units. That's done because of BIM, prefabrication. So one last thing I wanted to say on Lepore County, that's it for the courthouse. So please, if you'd like to go through, I'd love to take you. The one thing I'd like to make a comment, if you don't mind, about the Lepore County Highway Department. I'll tell you what, I'm amazed with this weather we've had in the last month. I think Bob Young and his team and all of you have done an amazing job on the roads and the surfaces that we had to deal with here in the last month and a half to get around. So thank you very much for that and thank you for letting me take the time.
Thank you, Joe.
Anybody have any questions or anything before I run?
No.
No?
No, absolutely. And a shout out to Dwayne Warner, too, at the Highway Department. So he took over for Bob when Bob retired.
Oh, he did? I didn't know that.
Yep.
Well, congratulations. You did a wonderful job.
Absolutely. And thank you. And that is an amazing system, the way they, you don't have somebody getting in the way of another contractor.
That is correct.
It's amazing. Any other public comments? There's anybody on Zoom at home that would like to speak? Raise your hand or let us know or wave to us.
Rodney McCormick.
Go ahead, Rodney. Can you turn?
Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street, Michigan City.
Can you hear that?
Hey Rodney?
Hang on, Rodney.
Just one second.
Turn the volume up just one second, please.
Okay.
Sorry, we couldn't hear you.
Turn that, turn that up.
All the way up.
Yeah, they got a microphone over there.
That's all the way up.
Is the mic on?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead Rodney. We'll do our best to hear you.
Yeah, Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street, Michigan City. I just want to talk about the, the public comments ordinance that you guys are about to vote on. I, I think that, I know that it's violating our rights as citizens to come in and complain about, about you guys doing a bad job, or even our right to even say thank you for doing a good job. The two go hand in hand. And it's just outright wrong to even consider, I call it the county process, the county attorney, the county attorney ordinance. This should not have anything to do with the county attorney. I went back for three years looking at commissioners' meetings, looking at the council meetings, and I ain't never seen nobody being asked to sit down. I seen where people was angry about a certain issue, but it was addressed and it was never a problem. Now, all of a sudden, everybody want to get on this fad of shutting down our right to speak or to say something. And I just want to say something to you. What I'm holding in my hand right now is an Indiana Supreme Court brief, transfer brief. I had this in my hand a few weeks ago, and Shaw Freeman, I mean, the county attorney, had Diane shut my, shut my feed off. I had a John Lake shirt on one day, it shut my feed down. I was just on the meeting looking, just looking at it, and it shut my mic off. These, this shouldn't, this should, you guys should not even consider doing this at all. I know no council member, even though respectfully, I know Mr. Yagelski, you brought this to the table, but you didn't, you didn't design that ordinance. That came directly from the county, the county attorney. He needs to stay, to me, he just needs to stay over there just doing his job and let you guys do your job, because I think y'all doing a good job. But I'll be honest with you, any one of you who sign on to this, this nonsense, as written by the current attorney, I see you in 2022. I'm going to do everything in my power to make sure we voted the opposite way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corr. Just for the record, this wasn't drafted by the commissioner's attorney. So this was drafted by the council attorney, so.
Mr. President, can I have?
Hang on, just hang on one second.
Please?
Hey Rodney, just, Rodney, just one more thing here, just as a point of order, point of order. I was only reading it. I did not draft anything. I was only reading the document. All right, next. Jeff, go ahead.
Mr. President, can you, can you hear me, please?
Yeah, can you identify yourself?
Absolutely. Jeff Santana from Michigan City. Good evening, council members. I guess I'll start with the topic of public comment this evening. As for those that have been following the first 53 days of this year of 2021, I guess we could say a few meetings have been, to say the least, a bit too much, too much Lewis. I, I'm sorry. I'm hoping that this council will use discretion and exercise the spirit of exceptions to rules and allow those that come before you to speak openly, candidly, in a course that they use tact diplomacy and respect for the office of that that you represent when they address you. We, we want that to happen, and folks, that's what you need to do. But I will also say, I remind you, it is the public, of those that voted, that put you in those seats that you are sitting in now, and quite frankly, can take you out. Reflecting on my eight years of serving on this council, the Lepore County Council, I do not remember having to remove or much less gavel anyone that brought their grievances to the council. Excuse me. Moving on, as there was talk and discussion over the last couple of years, to implement and explore different ways of operating county government, such as bringing in an independent company to evaluate the workforce in, in our, you know, government, this is done, I want everyone to know, and it should be done, where we can see where more help is needed in one office versus another office. And just like in private industry, we should continue to evaluate where costs can be kept to a minimum in that the county is truly living within the means of services being offered and funded by the general fund. I've said that a number of times. I'm trying to be brief, staying within three. I must point out, this is not to lay off any employees, but to be more conservative and not automatically replace someone that is left or retired. I will say this to the council right now. I caution you, wait, wait out this pandemic for a little bit, so that when we bring in this study, it will truly give us a, a real look at what needs to be done. Another thing, and I said this before I left office, is to have a brief report of our typically, I say, go-to funds on a monthly basis. Funds like our general fund, the riverboat, the cadet, the seated, et cetera. I'm talking about a simple starting point of balance as of the date of the meeting it is being disclosed and carrying on month by month. A couple other things. Randy Novak, our president right now, councilman, has brought up in the last couple of years to bring in an accountability system and put that in place for the comings and goings, basically, of our employees. This would be accomplished by having maybe a clock system, nothing has been determined, a, or having employees punch in or out on, on a computer, or a different system, maybe that's already out there that we're not sure of, but it is something that we should consider. I will tell you this, while I was on the council, I did hear from some employees that didn't want to be whistleblowers or give their names, that said they did see sometimes that there were comings and goings of different employees and it was never questioned, and they didn't like that. One more, or two more things, please. If you can tell all of us how much has been sent, yeah, what was spent with the stipend program initiated by the commissioners and supported by the council, of course. Lastly, that, that one thing, how much was actually spent? And then lastly, for tonight's comments, what is the running total? This is something else that I was very interested in. Of the dollars that have been spent, of the 3.1 million that was put in our general fund, as you all know, there was 500,000 that was already taken care of, but that was put in our general fund for COVID-related expenditures. How much of that running total is still there? And something confusing to me, in, in honesty goodness, and I say this like this, I heard it once, and I'm not going to exaggerate and say that I heard it a thousand times, I heard it twice, by Councilman Rosenbaum, that, and I've been intrigued by this, I'm not, you know, throwing him out there, that he has said that we've, we've used that entire fund. Okay, so I wrap up by saying, if any of you will respond during your council comments to what I've said, I'd appreciate it. I know that this is not a question and answer time, and I thank you for your time. Thanks so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom? Anybody from the public that likes to speak? Not? Public comment is not closed. Move on to department head reports. Are there any department heads? Please state your name. Sir?
Michael Schultz, Lepore County Assessor. I'm just here to update you on, and to give my staff kudos. Our ratio study was approved, not last week, the week before last, on a Friday. So they finally updated the map in the state on the DLGF website. What is interesting, we, we were approved on February 12th. We submitted our ratio study eight days earlier this year, and it was approved 18 days sooner. On the map, there are seven counties that are approved. We are the fourth county to be approved, and we are the largest county to be approved out of the 92. So kudos to my staff, because we've been working a hybrid schedule with phones and laptops. We were able to get this done and get it done more than adequate, because you, March 1st is actually the deadline. So very proud of my staff, my chief deputy, and for getting this done. So it's up in the auditor's office. Now, these are the values you're going to see on the green forms in a couple of months, so those will be used for next year. But we're really proud, where that office has come over 12 years, and to be in the top five of the state of Indiana, and they always give us kudos when we get it done. So I'm very appreciative of this part we get from the council, the commissioners, and like again, my staff, kudos to my staff.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Yagelski. Where's your chief deputy?
Stacy Switzer.
Mr. Schultz, a couple of questions.
Yeah.
That was pretty good from going dead last to where we at right now. So that's very important. So what do we see as far as the values? Because I, you know, as far as real estate, I know the values have seen they've gone up throughout Lepore County. What has been a trend as far as the value?
Up.
Percentage wise, I'm sorry.
I don't have the report of that yet. The problem we're seeing is because our sales were submitted on time and adequate for the state's need-to-know basis, I guess. They, some of them were just crazy. I mean, we had a half acre with a mobile home that was probably 70s or 80s, $50,000 up in Hudson Lake, not on the lake. It was a cash sale, so thank God it was invalid. But we were seeing stuff like that, that we don't know where this, this money, but we did try to keep it on the lower end as far as when we adjust the sales for the market, so I can have my deputy run a report to see what they're going to look like for next year.
I would appreciate it. I think a couple of years ago, I asked us to get involved in this, because a lot of people don't understand that their taxes do go up because of these reasons, too.
It's, it's the sales, and it's probably going to continue this year.
Yeah, it's good. I'm just saying that the people don't, they, when they see our tax bill, they're saying that we're raising their taxes. I mean, their taxes will go up proportionally if your value of your homes go up.
Well, they'll be capped at 1% as long as they have the home step, but the cap is only the cap of the assessment.
Right.
Not, not a 1% tax necessarily.
And it's bittersweet, because your home values go up, so you can sell it for more money, but then your taxes go with it. You can't have a house that, so unfortunately, one goes with the other.
Yeah, I mean, we were pulling our hair out when these sales were coming through, because it's like, you know, they're on the market 10 days, they're on the market four days, and it's, so you're going through there, and if it looked like it was completely out of whack, you were looking for a reason not to use that sale in the study, because it just did not make sense.
That's the good part, but I mentioned in fact, though, that you, overall, though, you say sales are up, and you'll be able to give us a number and see what that percentage actually is?
Yeah, we should, we could, we can do it by township, or we can do it by overall. We usually like to run them by township, because, you know, like Galena Township, that's the haven for the Chicago group now. You know, they, they like to buy 10 acres, 15 acres, and put a little McMansion out there. And it's, it's hurting, like years ago when it was the Long Beach turn, that the, the person that lived on the lake all those years, you know, they were able to manage their taxes. Well, then all of a sudden, the price just went through the roof. That's what's happening in some of these areas through the county, that it's not making sense why something, that's why I always said it'd be nice we could have a submarket. The Chicago buyers would be in their own market, because it's a deal for them, but it's not a deal for those in Lepore County.
Unfortunately, with the exit out of Chicago and Illinois, we're going to, we're seeing even more people, right?
Yeah.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you. And your department is doing a great job. Kudos to you.
Give me my deputy.
They are. Your deputy and the rest.
Yeah, we're still working hybrid, but I think hopefully, once the shots, everybody gets shot, because we've had, I think, four cases of COVID in the office. And we have a person on part-time now that has it right now. So we hope the, the hybrid has kept it down, but everyone, all their phones ring to their phone or their house. They're all on a, the laptop that is the same program that we have at work, so the work hasn't stopped.
First of all, congratulations on being top five. Out of 92 is definitely an incredible feat. We are one of the few counties that has a second assessor and Michigan Township Assessor, I believe. And I'd like to know with their participation, if they took care of their territories?
We tried working with them. We tried helping them out, but it got to the point that we just went ahead without them. I don't know what the issue is. You know, I think the issue that we don't have is because everyone is so well-trained and they can do, they continue their continuing ed classes, so they keep on top of it, and they're truly like to be assessors. So, but yeah, we tried working with Scott earlier in the summer and told him to start working on the neighborhoods and all that, and it just, it didn't start that soon. It started towards the end, and he, he ran out of time.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Schultz? Thank you, Mike. Any other department heads?
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Mike Pollan, building commissioner.
How you doing?
Good. How about you?
Good. Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you. Just to clarify, later on on the agenda, the hiring is not to replace me. I have one of my office people is retiring, so it is to replace that staff member.
Sorry about that.
And while I'm here, I might as well give a report. So since I've taken over, I've issued several extensions on citations that the previous building commissioner has issued, so I have time to review the files and understand their needs and their situations. We've issued new citations. What else? We've accepted many petitions for variances. I had my first Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. Contractor renewals come in daily, as well as the daily complaints. It's a busy office. We get a lot of complaints. And I've even taken some floodplain management calls. That was some, that was a seamless transfer, because we used to do that in the, the office I came from before the building commissioner's office took that over. So in many ways, we hit the ground running without missing a beat.
Right.
So I'm happy to report. We get a lot of complaints. And I've even taken some floodplain management calls. That was some, that was a seamless transfer because we used to do that in the office I came from before the building commissioner's office took that over. So in many ways, we hit the ground running without missing a beat.
Right.
So I'm happy to report the first week to you.
Thank you, Mr..
Thank you.
Mr. Yagowski.
Mr. Pollan, how are we doing with the computer program with with people being able to go online and and get a roof and permit or whatever that we've been?
Okay, so it works, but there can be improvement. And what I would like to do is get a representative from Beacon to come in, do a Q and A, some more training, and maybe some additional software. I haven't, I got to get into it more to see exactly what we need and how we can tweak it to make it better and more efficient. Because the way it is right now, you can do some of the stuff through the program. But I think it can be tweaked. I think it can be made better. If you'd like to work with me on that, you know, once I get settled in and I have a chance to look at that, I'd be happy to recommend something.
And Darlene Hale also, since she was a big part of that. Could you also give us a kind of a report as you, as the year goes on, as far as, I mean, are the new home starts trending up, you know, and different types of things as far as, even if it's a quarterly report on, you know, how many permits were issued, what they, you know, just kind of give us an idea of what's going on, just, especially with the housing market taking off, it's kind of interesting to see how the county's doing with the?
You bet. I'd be happy to provide that to you, how many permits we're issuing, what type of permits they are. The, I think we can even include a cost in there so we can calculate, you know, a number on the renovations for permits.
You can just email it all to us. You don't have to, you know, necessarily come here every month unless you're more than welcome to.
All right. Great.
Definitely.
Any other questions?
Nope.
All right.
I look forward to working with you. Thank you. Any other department heads? Any department heads on Zoom? Any other department heads? Any none? Department head reports are closed. Liaison reports? Let's start with Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. President. My only liaison visit has been with Mr. Pollan. He just left the podium, and I would like to brag a little bit about his ability to transition from the MS4 office to the building commissioner's job without leaving MS4 hanging. I mean, he's kind of doing both jobs there for a week or so, and I'd like to fact after an hour's discussion with him that he sees the big picture. Instead of every little isolated office, if everybody works together, things are going to get a lot better, and I think he sees that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Molenauer?
Yes, on January 27th, I attended vaccine updated by the Lepore County Fairgrounds with the Vaccine Clinic. On January 27th, I also attended the Lepore County Redevelopment Commission meeting. February 1st, I attended the Lepore County Solid Waste District Board meeting, and that was a public workshop. I'll get to that, a little bit more information here in a minute. And on February 10th, I attended a COVID Vaccine Clinic at the Lepore County Fairgrounds. February 10th, I attended Economic Development Toolbox Workshop provided by Tony Rodriguez. And on February 10th, I attended a Solid Waste District Public Hearing and District Board meeting, and that was regarding a rate increase, which that was discussion and meeting was tabled until tonight, and I'll get to that in a second. And on February 17th, I attended the Commissioner's Quarterly Insurance Employees, our employees' meeting. And I'll have some more to report on that, I'm sure, as things go along. I think probably one of the most important things, there's a workshop set up that I and Commissioner Haney is going to be attended here, attending here late, early next month. But I know we're, we always bring up, especially Councilman Yagowski, about wanting some figures for our budget time in July. And they are working on that. GIS Craig Menney is doing what he can, and I'm sure, and he's going to report back to us at our next quarterly meeting in May, so I'll have more at that time. And the last but not least, tonight, February 22nd, the board attended a board meeting for the Lepore County Solid Waste District, and that was a special meeting after the one that was tabled, and that was regarding the discussion and vote on recycling rate increase. And it was unanimous vote tonight, which would have been carried six to, six to zero, that there will be an increase, a 50% increase. And now this, I know it was mentioned tonight, that I guess some people were confused earlier that they thought it was like for trash pickup also. This is for recycling. I want to make that clear. And it was 50% increase would be, which would be a $2 increase for residential and $1.50 for commercial. I think that, that's it, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molenauer. Terry, were you, you lit up on the screen?
Yeah, yeah. I stopped in to talk to our new clerk, Heather Stevens, so basically, she went over her staffing issues with me. She seemed like everything is running pretty smoothly. And then we talked about her possible remodel of her Lepore office, which she has on the agenda tonight, so she's hoping that she'll get approval on that. And I also stopped in and talked with Commissioner Joe Haney last week, just went over some of the things that county was dealing with. And the auditor was my past liaison, so out of nature, I stopped in and talked to our auditor. That time, he was kind of bringing me up to date about what Mike said about the solid waste rate increase.
Stacy.
And then Sheriff Boyd and I talked about his request that he has on the agenda tonight with the jail doors, and also about the retirement money that needs to be put in. And then he's been keeping me up to date on the sickness that they have in the jail. As of right now, things seem to be getting back to normal, so he's hoping that maybe possibly the Health Department will give him an option of having those inmates vaccine given to them to help the situation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Councilwoman Graham Marosa.
Okay, so I did, I'm a liaison for the Pelletin. I did stop by there and met with the director there, and I set up an appointment next week to go and visit the center. I've talked to Tony Hendricks, but I think that he's going to be speaking a little bit later about what he has going in his department. And met with the Veterans Office, and everything's going smooth there. Besides that, I've attended different meetings with Tony Rodriguez and different departments, but I think all of us have pretty much, so that's all I have to report.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yes, thank you. Attended some of the following meetings, Parks and Rec, Redevelopment Commission meeting, also part of the Economic Development Toolbox Workshop with Tony. Thank you. It's always good to be reminded of things you seem to just forget, and then it's important. New this year for me is FMEC. Quite interesting to start getting involved with that and exciting, actually. I'm really looking forward to working with some of the people there, and have already started that. Zoomed into commissioners' meetings, Planning Board. I've met with the coroner. There'll be things that'll be coming up in front of us next month. I did visit the construction at the building maintenance facility on Monroe, the two buildings there. I've also participated in several Zoom meetings, not all of them, regarding the COVID, and there's a separate call for the vaccines. So it's been a very nice and busy month. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yagowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we, the data board met for the first time with some elective officers and some agenda. We will have a, by next meeting, I'll have a final presentation to make in front of the board. Because of the COVID rules and things of nature have changed, so has the idea of what the data board's role will be in that change, so we'll be more active than it was in the past. And so that's about it. I'll have, out of the next meeting, I'll have a report. Thank you.
Thank you. I also attended the Redevelopment Commission meeting, which we have one this Wednesday again also. Health Department Weekly Vaccine Clinic Calls, the Weekly Courthouse Calls. We had one this morning with updates, and it was great to have Joe Corr come here tonight with the pictures, share with everybody. And FMEC, a lot going on over there. I also want to add that one of the things we talked about at the end of last year that Councilman, former Councilman Santana had mentioned, just want to let everybody know that the auditor's office did send out fund balances to the council, I think earlier today or prior to the meeting. The emergency reserve has $7,213,413. The general fund has $10,332,762. And the riverboat has $3,770,723 at this time, is what was reported to us. So just want to let everybody know, it's one of the things we talked about at the end of last year is giving out those fund balances beginning of the meeting.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr.?
Minor correction, the riverboat is the riverboat admission only, it's not the riverboat wind tax, so there would be another category there, might have additional dollars.
Correct. These were the three funds that they sent out.
Correct. The riverboat is actually riverboat admissions.
Correct.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. President, we provided you, we provided you the three funds where appropriations requests were potentially coming from. If you have additional requests or would like a larger number of funds every month, the office, my office would be happy to provide it.
Just the fund balances, just whatever all the funds are, just send them out just like you did with this one.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you. Any other liaison reports? None? Correspondence?
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes, Terry.
I was curious, are any of those funds designated for expense yet this year? Are those the correct totals that we can spend yet?
Those should be the correct.
Those are the correct totals that you can?
Right. Prior to tonight's meeting, now, obviously, we're going to spend some of that tonight, but none of this, none of these funds have been pre-allocated for other expenses. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Right. All right. Correspondence?
Mr. President, I asked you previously to read a letter into the record, but I know Mr. Haney was at a meeting previously. He is in the attendance. I would prefer that he read the letter himself since he's here. If that's acceptable to the council?
Yeah. Correspondence for the council.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilman Cunningham, Mr. President. I initially submitted this for correspondence because I was concerned with the solid waste meeting tonight. I was elected president of that, and I needed to be there for the entire thing with the fee increases. I was concerned that there may be additional time required for public comment, as it stood, the meeting actually was rather timely. The letter here to Lepore County Council from Joe Haney, Vice President, Lepore County Commission. Dear council members, it is becoming abundantly clear to me that the issues relating from the lawsuit Mr. Friedman has filed against the auditor are affecting his judgment, demeanor, and ability to impartially execute the duties of county attorney. Over the past two months, Mr. Friedman has offered bad legal advice and attempted to exert undue influence over members of the commission and council. Furthermore, Mr. Friedman continues to flagrantly attempt to question the abilities and conduct of Mr. Stabos in his official capacity. Most recently, over the AT&amp;T phone bill issued that Treasurer Winski so aptly explained. This latest attack by Mr. Friedman on the county auditor was blatantly personal and unfounded. Mr. Friedman attempts to paint the lawsuit as personal in nature, but has multiple times brought county officials, department heads, and the entirety of our county employees who have access to email into this debacle. Mr. Friedman has attempted to stifle our comments, those of elected officials, in regards to the lawsuit by making outlandish claims such as, quote, "because this is," quote, "pending litigation, you are unable to comment on any of the claims," end quote. You've all, of course, seen that email. The idea that I, Council President Novak, or any of, any of us are unable to comment on, be able to comment on that or defend ourselves in the sphere of public opinions by allegations or assertions and claims made by Mr. Friedman is outrageous, doubly so because this lawsuit is allegedly against Mr. Stabos personally, and as such, allegedly wouldn't involve the county. While while appearing the entirety of the charges Mr. Friedman alleges against the auditor in his suit are not older than January 21st, 2021, and because of the multiple attacks Mr. Friedman has made against Mr. Stabos in his official capacity, it is my opinion that Mr. Friedman is attempting to play both sides of this issue by claiming this suit is personal, and as such has himself leveled charges directly against the auditor himself in his official capacity. It is therefore my opinion that Mr. Friedman has demonstrated on multiple occasions that he is incapable of discharging his duties as county attorney in an impartial manner and should immediately step down until this matter has been fully resolved. Signed, Joe Haney, Commissioner, District 3, Vice President, Lepore County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Haney.
Thank you.
Is there any other correspondence? Any other correspondence?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Winski?
Mr. President, yes. I wrote a letter to the, I wrote an email to the council and the commissioners, and I sent it late today. I'm not sure that all of you, well, I hope you all received it in your email, but I, if if it pleases the council, I would like to read that into the record as correspondence.
Go ahead.
This was written, like I said, to the commissioners and to the council and several elected officials. It was my intention to stay out of this fight. It was never my intention to be involved in an ongoing personal battle, but here I am, being dragged into the fray. Most of you know that I have been involved with county and city government for over 35 years, and never, I repeat, never, have I witnessed such a debacle as this. I am embarrassed for all of us, yes, all of us. The notoriety this has brought to our county is not the kind of recognition that we want or that we need. Eight years ago, I brought us out of one of the worst tax fiascos in the state. I consider this in the same category. I am not a savior, but I am sitting here shaking my head and wondering when this is going to end. This has now affected almost every employee, thanks to Mr. Stabos' email to all users. I have worked with both Democrats and Republicans in my 35-plus years in government. When a newly elected official comes into office, they usually come in eager to learn the job, humbled by the trust the voters have given him or her. Not so much here. While there are several newly elected officials that have adhered to this practice, there are others who jumped right in, not bothering to learn how things are done in government, and most of the things in government are dictated by state statute or code, and that's what I'm talking about, and have taken matters into their own hands with their own theory of how government should work. My explanation to all of you last week on just a part of how the financial system work, how our financial system works, was based on state manuals and code that I learned from years of working in government. Now, let me explain that your preconceived notion that Mr. Friedman does not know what he is doing couldn't be farther from the truth. Two days into my first term as auditor, we discovered a $200,000 of missing funds in the county. With proof of missing funds in hand, the first call I made was to the State Board of Accounts, who promptly told me to call the county attorney. The first call made when there are missing funds is to the county attorney. As prosecutor, Mr. Lake probably knows this, and because he didn't understand the financial system, and why should he? That's not in his job description, and neither is it in Mr. Friedman's, by the way. But Mr. Lake only knew that the bill was not paid and questioned what happened to the money. It is the county attorney's job to give counsel and advice to the Board of Commissioners and, when asked, to the department heads and other elected officials. While Mr. Friedman and I do not always see eye to eye and disagree on a myriad of topics, we both respect each other and have relied on each other for the expertise and knowledge we both possess. I can say with confidence that- I can say with confidence that there are only a handful of attorneys in Lapeur County that have the skills necessary to represent municipal governments, and Mr. Friedman is one of them. It takes a special skill set to represent and defend county and city government. To ask for Mr. Friedman to resign is ridiculous. This ongoing battle is personally, is purely personal. I get it. I get it. Mr. Stamos and several other influen, others influencing him do not like Mr. Friedman, but that's not a reason for dismissal. In the past eight years, Mr. Friedman has saved this county thousands of dollars in frivolous lawsuits, defended the county against embezzlement, and working with elected officials and department heads kept this county moving forward. Mr. Stamos, you need to focus on your job. Your annual report is due this week. The abstract must be done and approved by the third week of March in order to have on-time tax bills, and we all know how important all time, all on-time tax bills are. Mr. Haney, you can keep, you can help Mr. Stables by making certain these tasks are completed on time. It's not the auditor's position or responsibility to advise the commission or the council without being asked, and then only on financial matters. The auditor is the clerk to the Board of Commissioners and Council, and as such, does not make policy, does not pass legislation, or offer unsolicited advice. Learn what your job is before you start telling others what their job is. Finally, let me say this. It's time for all of this to stop. Stop using the county's email to air your grievances. A lawsuit has been filed, let the courts decide that outcome. Democrats and Republicans don't agree with each other, not very often, but let me remind you one more time. Park those shingles at the door. We are all servants of the people, and let's make them proud. Let's go back to doing the business of the people, the taxpayers who pay our salary. Let's do what's important. Let's keep our citizens safe and our county well-cared-for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other correspondence?
Yeah, just one, if I may, one clarifying fact so the public's not misinformed. The annual report is due March 1st, it's not due this week. The treasurer's incorrect on that fact.
Thank you. Let's go into ordinances, resolutions. At this time, Mr. Cunningham has a resolution that we're going to number 2021-04, if that's assuming.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Cunningham?
Based, majority of this is based on the letter I just heard from Mr. Haney, which I had read earlier in the day. Resolution of Lapeur County Council expressing support of the county auditor and county commissioner Joe Haney. Whereas Shaw Friedman is the outside attorney hired by the county commission to represent Lapeur County, and whereas Shaw Friedman has filed a defamation lawsuit against Lapeur County Auditor, and whereas Shaw Friedman has documented in emails and texts threatening county commissioner Joe Haney with similar defamation lawsuit for Commissioner, Commissioner Haney openly expressing his opinion about Mr. Friedman, and whereas it is incumbent on Mr. Friedman to respect that the three commissioners are his boss, both jointly and severally, and that threatening his boss is an act of insubordination as well as rank violation of his duty of loyalty to Lapeur County. And whereas Lapeur County Council ascertains the intent of the Friedman lawsuit, Friedman's threats against Commissioner Haney and Mr. Friedman's behavior generally as inappropriately interfering with the undermining, thwarting, and intimidating of county auditor and county commissioner in the good faith execution of their lawful duties. Now therefore, it be ordained that the Lapeur County Council expresses its unqualified support for county auditor, county commissioner Haney, and any other county official or employee, the council may judge it is the intent of Mr. Friedman to intimidate or harass in the performance of their lawful duties or in the execution of their First Amendment rights under the U.S. and Indiana constitutions. Furthermore, Lapeur County formally recalls on Mr. Friedman to step down as county attorney until any outstanding or intended legal actions are fully adjudicated by the courts.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
I would make a motion to adopt that resolution 2021-04.
There's a motion by Mr. Cunningham. The motion by Mr. Cunningham, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gardner. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Yagowski?
First of all, not understanding the resolution coming from the county council. We have, the council has no authority over the commissioners on their attorney or who they decide to hire as attorney. I mean, if we look at the same thing, if an outsider looking in, if Mr. Friedman is not supposed to be there, then I guess Mr. Haney should step down during the court proceedings the same way. Or in the same thing, the auditor should step down too. I think when we do that, it's totally, it's ridiculous as it sounds, as ridiculous as this is coming in front of us as tonight. I asked very nicely last meeting, by the way, nice job on the council minutes, correctly written, that was very nice of whoever's doing the minutes, I appreciate that. I was asked at the last meeting if we could find a way to work together, apparently not. This is not, I, I will, in my own respect, will not let this stuff come in front of the council because it will not, it will not show a bad mark against the council as far as how we tell the commissioners to run their meetings. I've been numerously told over the years, Mr. Yagowski, you're not a commissioner, and I've had to go ahead and listen to that comment more than once, trust me, from anybody from, from the top 20 years ago till 10 today. So with due respect, Mr. Cunningham, I just don't, there's nothing in here that has any, any due diligence for the council that I see tonight.
Mr. President, may I respond?
Mr. Cunningham?
Slight difference, Mr. Yagowski, is that Mr. Friedman is not an elected official, he was appointed. He could be, he could step down until the court adjudicates and be reappointed immediately thereafter. Mr. Haney and Mr. Stamos are both elected officials, don't have that luxury, so to speak, and they've been, both of them have been elected for, for four-year terms approximately two months ago. You're exactly right. Nothing in this resolution tells the commission to remove him. It asks that he step down until the court adjudicates. There's no authority here whatsoever. It's a position of this council, if it's approved for four votes or more. I would call it a vote of moral support. There's no real teeth in it. It's a vote of moral support for Mr. Haney and Mr. Stamos.
Mr. President?
I'd like to ask the attorney at this time, would I be, would I be able to add anything to the resolution?
Yes, and there needs to be some, some changes, like the First Amendment information is misapprehended. If you're going to do a resolution, it's not ordained, that's an ordinance, that term would have to be resolved. This matter was just, this resolution was just brought up, and so I think right now it's a work in progress, so, right, Mr. Cunningham?
Absolutely.
Mr. President, then at that point, I would like to make an add, whereas, please. Whereas I see that, since we went to council's advice, and yes, two elected officials can step down, they can, they can step down as a one till, till the court goes through, I ask that both the, Mr. Haney and the commissioner, and Mr. Stamos step down also, whereas.
Are you also including the corrections that the attorney mentioned?
I'm not, yeah, those, those are fine. I put that in my motion, but I'm, or my motion does, but I'm, but I'm, I'll put that as also set forth, but I'm also putting my whereas on this part.
All right. So.
First of all, the issue.
Wait a second, we have a motion. Let's get a second on that, see if there's a second on the motion before we.
Well, there's already been a second from Mr. Gardner.
For an amendment, this is an amendment.
Who made the motion?
What's that?
Who made the motion?
Mark Yagowski.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So is there a?
I have a second.
No.
No, Gardner's seconded the original motion.
Point of order.
Thank you. Point of order question. If there's a motion on the floor and if there's any changes to be made, doesn't the original person and the person who seconded it have to make those changes? That a second motion could not be done until the first one was either voted on or changed?
That is correct, but this resolution was brought in at the last moment and we're trying to, to work through it.
I just want to make sure, I'm understanding.
If we are, but yes. So, Mr. Cunningham, will you accept, Mr.?
Absolutely not. I would accept any legal changes you want to make, but I'm not going to accept that we're going to ask Mr. Haney and Mr. Stamos to step, step down, obviously not.
Okay. So as to the legal changes, the first thing, the first, the First Amendment is, is misapprehended. First Amendment rights have to do with a state actor squelching people's ability to, to partake in, in discussion. Mr. Friedman, no way is a state actor. He's not part of the government, he is an independent law firm who, you know, is entitled to his opinions regarding that.
Point of order?
Yes.
Point of order, Mr. Friedman interrupt, was the one that interrupted me at a county, at a county admission meeting.
I don't think, I don't think you can, you're not.
So, Mr. Friedman is not a state actor, thus, the, the First Amendment does not apply to him. The First Amendment would apply to this board or, or the agency or anything along those lines.
I think that's what it says. It's, it's not referring to Mr. Friedman's free speech, it's referring to everybody else's free speech.
Well, no, it, no, it doesn't, because when you look at the commas, Mr. Friedman to intimidate or harass comma in the performance of their duties or in the execution of First Amendment rights, that's part of the same.
Who does there refer to?
Well, I didn't write this. Who does there? I'm, I'm assuming Commissioner Haney and other county officials and employees, because that's in the same paragraph.
Correct.
Right.
So it's their First Amendment rights, not Mr. Friedman's, correct?
Right, but you, but Mr. Friedman cannot stop somebody's First Amendment rights, he is not a state actor.
That's exactly the point, Mr. DiMartino. In the previous meeting, he is the one that did stop. It wasn't the president of the commission, it was Mr. Friedman.
Okay, but he's not a state actor, so I, I guess I don't, I, I, so if, if something was out of order in somebody else's meeting, I, I can't comment as to that.
All right, what would you suggest we propose?
I suggest that you take that, you strike out.
Microphone. Or in the execution of their First Amendment rights under the Indiana and U.S. constitutions.
Okay, let me start over and tell me exactly where to strike that out, see if I can live with that.
Put a period after lawful duties.
Okay, period.
And then strike out the rest of the sentence.
I can accept that.
And now therefore be it resolved in the first part of that paragraph.
Instead of ordained, now therefore be it resolved?
Yes, sir.
We're going to change the word from ordained to resolved.
We'll try and do.
I can live with that. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagowski?
Okay, look, I, if, if this was handed to me and I, before the meeting, I had time to go through it, that's what we do with all the resolutions, I would have no problem with that. This is a work in motion type of resolution. So I still, I'm going to stand on that this was not handed until just two seconds before the meeting started. So this is not a motion that could come up this way unless there can be amendments to this motion.
Well, Mr. President, I would answer that, and Mr. Haney is here. Mr. Haney could give us a timeline as to when the latest email that caused him to write this letter occurred, and that was afternoon today, is that correct?
But we're not, we're not going to. I'm not debating that.
Okay.
I'm debating that we didn't receive this until now, so this is a work in order.
And there's a motion on the floor?
I understand your motion, sir, but this is a work in order. This came to us two seconds before the meeting, nobody had a chance to read, do any research on this conversation, so I'm, I'm suggesting, by the way, the rules that we have here, that we can make, we can make improvements to this one way or the other.
And, and just for the record, if Mr. Yagowski offers an amendment, it could be voted down. So I mean, just because he offers an amendment doesn't mean it, it's going to change the way he wants it, so.
Well, I mean, the only person who can make an amendment would be Mr. Cunningham, you can have to take it to vote. If Mr. Yagowski wants to come forward with a second resolution?
Correct.
We can go ahead and do that.
You can't offer an amendment to it?
Well.
Discussion, he can.
Discussion and then some, right, but not at this point in time.
I just accepted Mr. DiMartino's, it wasn't really an amendment, I accepted his changes.
Well, my last comment, Mr. President, is that this was, that this shouldn't be voted on because it was handed to me at the last minute. If we were to table it, it's fine, but we'd have no time to look into this conversation. I researched everything, Mr. Cunningham knows, I researched everything I get, including, like we just brought about, about this packet, I'm glad we got my packet now, because I take the time to read and I take the time to investigate.
My position, Mr. President, would be that if Mr. Yagowski has a better resolution, then he can bring that to the floor at our next meeting. If this passes, it's only going to be in effect for one month, and if Mr. Yagowski has something that he can get voted to, then we'll change it next meeting, I can live with that.
All right.
I think it's a democratic process.
Councilman McGraeme Marosa?
My point is, is that we, my point is that we just did receive this and we're already making changes. The attorney is asking to make some changes to this, that we give everybody the opportunity to take this home, read it, you make the changes that need to be, because you're, you're asking for us to make changes on it, and then we're not even going to get a clear copy unless we're sitting here and all changing our own and then trying to read it and then vote on it. I think that we need time for this.
I, I understand your position, Ms. Graham Marosa.
So what?
The difference between the word ordained and resolve, minor, I can live with that. I mean, it's, it's a legal term, certainly, and if he wants to, all we're doing is deleting the last sentence of the next to last paragraph. It's pretty easy for me to see what's left.
Point of order? Uh, point, point of order, this is resol, this needs to be resolution 2021, just for the record, 2021-2B, because the number two is the month, and then we use letters, because if we use three or four, then we're talking March or April.
That, that's fine. I thought it was the number of resolutions, so.
Mr. President, can I ask for a point of order from the attorney?
Mr. Yagowski?
Since this is, the motion was brought up, again, we didn't get it at the right, that minute, even though we haven't voted yet, can I ask, can we ask at any time for it to be tabled?
If you believe, if you believe that there, that the rules of the council throughout the years, which, which I don't know, is that resolutions need to be submitted beforehand at this, and you believe that it's premature, yes, five.
Fine, Mr. President, I can motion to table.
Second. We have a motion and a second to table. Is there, Mr. Clerk, would you, Mr. Auditor, would you call for approval? Where I get clerk, sorry.
Councilman Novak? Yes. Councilman Graham Marosa?
Yes.
Councilman Rosebo?
Yes, to table.
Councilman Yagowski?
Yes, table.
Councilman Cunningham?
Nay.
Councilman Mullenauer?
Yes, table.
Councilman Gardner?
You got to explain to me why we didn't vote on the other one, did Gero send his motion?
No, it was a motion to table it.
I, I understand, but he had a motion and I seconded. Did he withdraw his motion?
Members of the council, Mr. Gardner, have taken the position that resolutions need to be at least submitted to the, the council members beforehand.
I don't vote either way, I abstain.
You, I don't believe you can abstain. Believe you got it either voted yes or no.
Doesn't matter, the count doesn't matter.
You have to ask the attorney on that one.
Is that right, Mr.? I don't believe you can abstain from something that you're in the middle of.
Well, he, something.
He wants to abstain.
If you want.
Can you do that?
Sure.
I, I was under a different impression.
We're not going to make a vote.
All right, the motion's tabled. Let the record show that that is resolution, Mr. Auditor?
2021-2B.
To be or not to be?
To be.
That is the question.
To be. All right. So next item on the, let me find out where I'm at, bear with me. Next resolution is resolution 2020-30. A resolution authorizing, approving the entry into a joint inter-local cooperative agreement with the town of Potawatomi Park, Indiana. with the town of Potawatomi Park, Indiana, to assist in building inspection services between the town of Potawatomi and the LaPorte County. This is similar to what we did last year, correct?
Mr. President, this is similar to what we've done with Michiana Shores and a couple of other smaller communities in the county. We have not had a previous Greenwood-Potawatomi Park, but they lost their inspection person. I thought to the Building Commissioners Department, it's going to be less than six inspections a year. The pricing is the same as the other communities, so it should be pretty much a non-event, but since we are fixing a fee, it has to go in front of the council.
Right.
The county commissioners have already approved this request.
I just remember seeing this last year, so you're right, it was Michiana. So, what's the council's pleasure?
Can we find out what the fee is first?
Can we get a motion to, we need a motion.
Okay, make a motion to forward this resolution, but I still have that question.
There's a motion by Mr. Rosebaum, second, and by Mrs. Graham Marosa on the question.
Now, the question is, what is the fee if we're supposed to, Gary?
$50 per inspection, and that should, that's plenty to cover mileage and time over there. And our inspectors, they usually schedule things close to get together anyway, so for over, you know, Michiana Shores and that area, they can drop by, but the committee commissioners confident that that'll fully reimburse the count.
Thank you, I just want to make sure everybody knew what the amount was, since it was before us. Thank you.
And for clarification, somebody in Potawatomi Park still goes to the town of Potawatomi to get a permit?
Right.
They're not coming?
The county will not handle permits at all, it's just, they'll call for an inspection, we'll do the inspection, then we'll bill for it, they're going to handle their own permit.
It's just the inspection part of it.
Correct.
All right, is there any other questions? Mr. Yagowski.
Yes, is this, I have no problem with it as written, it was kind of just misunderstood. Is this to save from them having to do that their own, I mean, so that the county does, or is it because they're trying to follow our practices and the ordinance that we have for countywide ordinances?
I'm sorry, Mr., I couldn't hear you, Mr. Yagowski.
I'm sorry, Mr. Beechey, I'm sorry. Is this for, to save some money to, for a person that, to just let the county do the work, or is this so that we file the same countywide ordinances?
I think the main reason is, they lost the person that was doing the inspections, and they have so few in Potawatomi Park. I'm telling you, I spoke to Pat Donahue, he told me they had three all year last year.
Oh, it's okay.
They have so few, it's just a lot easier just to ask the county.
Thank you, Mr. Beechey, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Resolution 2021-2. A resolution of LaPorte County Council establishing policies and procedures to protect decorum and foster an effective administration of public meetings.
Mr. President, this was, this was held over from last month, I think we had another one that we substituted?
Correct. Is that the one that I think went out to everybody?
Yes.
So, the latest version of this was sent out to everybody yesterday, was it? Just, or day before? Is there any questions? Mr. Cunningham?
You want me to read it?
Could you please?
I could.
Because, because, just, as somebody from the public had mentioned earlier that they thought it was going to violate rights and everything, I just want everybody to know, the intention of this is absolutely not to silence anybody or stop anybody from talking with regards to any topic that's relevant to the meeting. The only thing it does, and primarily the reason this came up is because of Zoom, because we have no rules or regulations for Zoom, so we just, it's just to protect, to make sure there's no disruptions and things like that, that there's some control in this, because there was some issues at one of the previous meetings as to who was controlling the Zoom calls or the people on there, this spells that out so that there's no confusion, and I believe it also has some things. So, Mr. Cunningham.
Yes, in accord with Indiana law, all regular and special meetings of the LaPorte County Council are open to the public. Notice of all meetings will be posted in accord with Indiana law. Because the council believes in hearing the views of citizens residing in LaPorte County and organizations located here, we seek to adopt a policy to encourage effective and efficient use of public comment and input to aid us in our decision-making on various topics. The following guidelines will assist the council in hearing public comment while conducting effective meetings. One, public comment will be listed on the agenda. Two, each person shall give their name and address when addressing the council. Three, as a routine matter, public comment will be confined to three minutes per person. However, a majority of the council may, at their discretion, permit a longer time period for a given comment if they believe it is in the public's interest for the normal time period to be extended. Four A, the presiding officer or his or her designee may prohibit public comments which are deemed frivolous, repetitive, or harassing, vulgar, profane, or direct personal attacks. The presiding officer or designee may interrupt or warn a speaker they are in violation or potentially violating the rules, but only a majority vote can terminate a citizen's right to public comment. Any member of the council can appeal the presiding officer's determination to restrict comment, and this appeal will be decided by a majority of the council members present Hang on here, I'm adjusting the computer. For B, for Zoom or other teleconference comments, a member of the public shall raise their hand. There is a raise hand function on a Zoom platform reactions tab at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The speaker will then be called upon when it's their turn. The presiding officer or designee may mute or censor the video of a speaker temporarily. However, under no circumstances should a member of the public be disconnected from listening and observing the Zoom conference. Any member of the council can appeal the presiding officer's determination to restrict comment, and this appeal will be decided by a majority of the council members present at the meeting. All comments shall be directed to the council. No person shall directly make charges or complaints against individual employees of the county. Other appropriate channels should be utilized for those allegations. To assist persons who approach the podium with process, there will be a cover sheet on the podium with the following information, and these are bullet points. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name and address before you begin. Please direct your comments directly to the council. Please maintain a civil, respectful decorum during your comments, and the board may vote to extend or limit your time based on the full rules.
Is there any, what's, what's the council's pleasure?
We can do accept.
A motion by Mr. Mullenauer. Second by Mr. Cunningham. This did go out to all the council members, asking for input on this. Mr. Yagowski.
Okay, stated before, Mr. McCormick has stated that a couple of things are wrong, that the President asked me as the Vice President to read it last time, like he asked Mr. Cunningham to read it today. I did not table this. We always read it at the meeting, and then with the following meeting, we vote on it. It was not, this was not tabled.
We can.
Understood, and there's a comment, don't make that sound so long. Along with that, you know, I'm glad we have all the way up to M, different things we have to do, but you know, we had, somebody said earlier, we had a great thing working before where we referred always back to Robert Schwes orders, and we've kept ourselves a good meeting and kept the decorum proper, so just don't see the excess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Mullenauer.
I got one comment, I know it wasn't in on this, but I think it's maybe, that it should be advised and begin to be on our special.
Microphone.
I'm sorry, I think it should probably be something that we advise people that when they're zooming in, that they aren't, they shouldn't be allowed to hold up a sign. I don't know what the sign said, but I seen an individual on there tonight that held something up, and I just don't think that's appropriate. Thank you.
Mr. President, there might be, it came up this evening, everybody got muted after the public comment, which I think is a good idea, because we don't hear dogs barking or people talking in the background. It seems like that's a logical thing for us to do, once public comment is over, is to mute everybody until the President unmutes them to call them in. You can still raise your hand.
Right.
But I think that's a logical process, and we're all learning, Zoom is a new target, we're trying to hit it.
And as I stated before, the intention is not to stop anybody, to limit anybody, it's just so that we can have an orderly meeting and continue and do the business of the people. So, with that, is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Can I request a roll call?
Please.
I just wanted to counsel one, I'm sorry, I shouldn't request it at the council.
It's okay, I'll request a roll call.
Go ahead. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cunningham. Councilwoman Graham Marosa. Councilman Garner.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenauer.
Aye.
Councilman Rosebaum.
Stevie.
Councilman Yagowski.
Nay.
And Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Motion passes, four ayes, two nays, one abstention.
Thank you.
For the record, is there a printed copy of this in this room, or no? There is, okay. Our office, I don't think ever got one, so, could we have one so we could, I'd like to get a printed copy that we could circulate to have everyone sign.
I'll sign it right now.
To everyone's sign, okay, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the item that we added.
Mr. President, before you go on, could I give some people thanks on that?
Say that again.
Could I give some people thank you for getting that?
Sure.
Resolution. Mr. Haney worked on that, presented it to the commissioners a couple of weeks ago, or last week, and forwarded to our attorney, Mr. DiMartino. The modifications that he made is exactly what I read this evening, and I appreciate the work that they did together. Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham, the question on this, the last thing that you read, is this the one that was in our packet, because I was told that, I was told that we have a different version, I just, I'm just asking.
It's in our packet.
There's a different.
It's in our packet.
Not properly.
It was the amended one.
It was the one that was amended and sent to all of us.
Everybody received the email.
Yeah, because I had to read it off my phone.
Sure enough, okay. Thank you, sir.
That's the one you're circulating, correct?
That's the one he's going to bring in print, a new one. I don't have it. All right. Mr. Cunningham, you have a copy of that one?
I just have it on the email now.
Okay.
I can give you the date and the time that it came in, if you want that.
Yeah, we're just going to try to sign one, that's all, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item would be the resolution, which I guess, looking at the auditor right now, would be number 2021-2C, the one supporting teachers with the vaccine.
That was from last month.
What?
I thought that was from last month, or?
No.
Oh, this is just public hearing.
This is the one that, we inserted. You also do not have a copy, this was emailed to all the council members?
Yeah.
So, I'm going to ask the attorney to read this, if he could, please.
Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has forced many school districts to replace in-person classroom instruction with virtual instruction, and whereas virtual instruction is no substitute for an in-person classroom instruction, and whereas certified school staff, teachers, and support staff should be identified as critical because of their vital role they play in the education and development of our state's children, and whereas vaccinating certified school staff, teachers, and school support staff must not take away any vaccine supply from other critical workers and individuals, and whereas it is imperative that we return students to in-person instruction as quickly and safely as possible while providing a safe environment for our certified school staff, teachers, and school support staff. Whereas the body has worked closely with the LaPorte County Commissioners and the LaPorte County Health Department to ramp up a vaccination clinic in the LaPorte County Fairgrounds, and has provided weekly conference calls to enhance collaboration and cooperation among all stakeholders in our county as we collectively seek to battle this pandemic. Now therefore be it resolved by the LaPorte County Council that we ask our local legislators to prevail on the Indiana State Department of Health, to place school employees in the Phase 1A vaccination group, and in the absence of a move of such employees into such group, ensure that all school employees are placed on call lists for surplus vaccine on hand at COVID-19 Phase 1A vaccination clinics.
Thank you, Guy. So, the purpose of this is with the, with the call that we're on weekly, the COVID call, the teachers, all the school superintendents are on there, and it's not to put a teacher in front of other people, but it's in the next level round of, when they go down to 60, they're, we're just, it's just a way of showing the support for the teachers, to have them included in that, since they're back, and it's so, such hands-on with the kids and such close proximity, so. Mr. Franciscone asked us, the superintendent for LaPorte Schools asked us if we would consider that, so that's why it's here tonight, so.
I'd like to make that motion, because I am a substitute teacher, I also have spoken to several other superintendents, they are so proud of us for thinking about doing this and hopefully pass it, so that we can suggest to our state legislature that they should help move this along.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to second that, and just make a comment that my wife already told me that I better vote aye on this due to the fact that she's been homeschooling three grandchildren for a couple of months prior to the first of the year, and she said it's nothing worse than trying to do that, so just wanted to make that comment, thank you.
Can you share with us, what was Sue's thoughts on any other item on the agenda?
We can do that right now.
We can move this along a lot quicker, so. No, absolutely, and I'm, are there any other council comments?
Mr. President?
Cunningham.
I think there would be some benefit as well, because with the teachers getting out of school earlier than most people get out of work, they could possibly fill some of those cancellations. If they get on a call list and somebody cancels that last minute, there's teachers all over the county that can probably get to any site fairly quickly.
Absolutely, and just so everybody knows, the, the call list that we've referred to up here is, in the evening, if they open a vial of vaccine and there aren't enough appointments already scheduled to give out that vaccine, they have a call list. The call list still has to follow the state mandates for the age requirements, so by opening it up, if they were able to allow teachers to come get those at that time, then they could come in those slots.
Yeah, and also to add to that, that's so that not one drop is wasted.
Correct.
Because once it's opened.
Right.
It's done.
You can't keep it overnight, so.
So, there's 12 to 14 in a vial, so they don't want to, they'll have to open it up for a person shows up.
10 to 11.
10 to 11, okay, better yet.
Mr. President, can we also, is the commissioners on the bottom of the list, or no?
I'm glad to see everybody's still got a sense of humor. All right, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Next item is a public hearing for the confirmatory resolution for personal and real property tax abatement for E-PAC machinery, so. What's that?
Public comment.
We're going to, go ahead and open it. So, at this time, we're going to open a public comment for the confirmatory resolution for personal and real property tax abatement for E-PAC machinery. So, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? For or against? For or against? Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Any? State your name, please.
Joe Haney, County Commissioner. I just wanted to say, we were on the same Zoom call earlier this year in relation to this. They've put in a lot of hard work, they employ a lot of, a lot of taxpayers here in LaPorte County and I think it's a strong, strong signal, not just to E-PAC, but to other facilities in our county, that if they want to stay here and they want to make major expansions like this, showing our support for that is something that's really, really important, really crucial, let the businesses know here in the county, not just businesses coming into the county that we're open and receptive to them, but businesses that are here already that we support them and we want them to stay here and we value their, what they do for our community, so, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Anybody else from the public would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? State your name, sir.
Michael Schultz, LaPorte County Assessor. I would also speak in support of this. They've been, they've worked with us in the past and stuff and they, it's a nice facility really out there, they keep it clean and they do hire quite a few people in the area, but they, they do, and they have worked closely with the assessor's office in the past, so I would concur that they should be granted this abatement.
Great, thank you, Mr. Schultz. Anybody else would like to speak? Anybody else? Public comment is now closed.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagowski.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 2021 dash O2 dash eight.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions or comments from council members?
I have.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
I've made no secret that I'm a numbers guy and the numbers gotta work for me. I will tell you that based upon the numbers, they plan on hiring another 10 people. Most people don't think that's a lot, but 10 people over 10 years offers a lot of salary. One of the things that we collect in our county is an income tax. It's less than 1%, but it sure adds up. It doesn't quite equal the exact amount that we are, are giving up in the, in the trade for the tax abatement, however, the tax abatement is only on new and I think that we need to keep moving forward in the county, as others believe as well, and the numbers can work as that continues to grow, so thank you.
Absolutely. Is there anybody else from the council?
You know, I would like to say too, I, I worked with them in 2018 and it's really a good company, a good growing company and I think that we really need to support them.
Thank you. Anybody else from the council? I too want to just echo that as Commissioner Haney stated, we were on the Zoom call with them and they showed us a video of the, the factory and, and everything and, and it's amazing, the things that they make and they make like fill stations and things, it's just incredible, the things they do and they, they ship these things all over and as I stated before, it, if you actually went through LaPorte County and found out all the different things that are like manufactured here and made here and everything like that, we, LaPorte County has quite the, quite the.
Array.
The array of different things and with that, there's no other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, motion passes. You got something you want to add, Tom?
I just wanted to thank the president's CEO, Tony Swiderski, who was prepared to give a brief presentation. You've already voted, just wanted to be certain the, the general public was aware. We do sincerely thank you council members for acknowledging the Toolbox Workshop. You mentioned myself, I appreciate that. I'm only one of a team member, Matt Reardon. We were fortunate to have Matt Sultanovitz, the Regional Director of the Indiana Economic Development Corporation, participate in that Toolbox Workshop and he really brought home how important it is to take care of business at home first and this, this is a substantial investment by this small aggressive entrepreneurial company and I applaud all that they've done. It's a, you know, we really, what we're able to do here this evening and, and be personally thanking the council for its support, we've, we've also in this particular process, we've streamlined how we're able to, to do this effectively and we only intend to continue to promote the program and enhance its ability to help our existing manufacturers expand in the future, so thank you, Tony, for taking your time and joining us this evening.
Thank you and we appreciate you. Thank you very much. Is there any?
I'd like to thank all, all the council board members for your support of our expansion as well as Mr. Rodriguez for his help getting this done, so thank you all from everybody at E-PAC.
Thank you.
And the tour begins when?
But my door is always open.
Okay.
I love, there's one thing I love to do is I believe everybody's seen and went through the presentation before, we love showing off that we do and we're, we are a unique manufacturer because we do everything from the fabrication, manufacturing of our products all the way to the control panel, so we're pretty vertically integrated, so we like showing our wear, so when anybody wants to swing by, see the before and after, I welcome you.
It's amazing, thank you again. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2021 dash two, an ordinance adopting LaPorte County, Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve 2021 dash two.
Say it again.
Motion to approve 2021 dash two dash O2.
Read it by title only.
No, no letter in this one?
No letter.
Okay. O2, I'm sorry.
Mr. Yagowski.
Read it by title only.
Read by title only, please.
And I'll second that. Sorry, threw me off there.
So motion to read by title only, hearing no objections, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Wait, wait, what? Those opposed? Thank you. Mr. Yagowski.
An ordinance adopting County of LaPorte, Indiana salary schedule and compensation policies.
Is that a motion?
Can we have a, a motion to suspend the rule and have it on one reading, please?
Yes, Mr. President, can I please have, suspend the rule and have this on one reading only?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, a motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum to have on both readings tonight. Is there any objection?
By title only.
By title only? Is there any objection? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Do you like to lead off with motion number one?
So motion to approve ordinance number 2021 dash O2.
So just point of order, Mr. Attorney, do we need, still have two readings?
No.
Just one, all right. So we have a motion by Mr. Yagowski, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Camarosa and Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. New business, consider approval of council president's authority authorization to hire replacement positions, the auditor's office, payroll administrator, real estate clerk and real estate deputy. You want to take these one by one or do them all together?
All together, please.
The next one is the health department is replaced for the environmental slash food supervisor. The next one is the treasures department for a second deputy. That person, I believe, went over to the clerk's office. Animal shelter replacement of the, due to the replacement of the animal shelter director, they've asked to replace the, one of the people internally moved up, so there's an opening in the animal control officer and the building department, permission to fill a vacancy in the building department due to someone retiring, so. These were all vacancies from either a new director, somebody moving up within, within or someone retired, so these are not new hires.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Mullenhour, motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is permission for the sheriff's office to hire new jail deputy position salary covered by elimination of two-process servers.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Mr. Yagowski.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Camarosa. Is there any other questions or comments? I think the sheriff.
Comment?
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Boyd shared with me today that because they're eliminating two-process positions, they'll eliminate two vehicles and he can explain to the council how they'll do that.
Yes, would you like me to explain the fact that we eliminated those two positions is exactly what we plan on doing?
No, basically, we're okay on that, it's a matter that you're also gonna have two cars that you can move down.
Yeah, what we're doing is we're taking two of the oldest cars in the process server fleet, we're gonna be trading those off in the month of April when we purchase new cars as part of our trade package and moving the cars for those that we eliminated, moving them up within that fleet, so they'll remain, but we are getting rid of two process server vehicles.
And, and having talked to you about that, you indicated that the mechanics didn't think those two cars you're getting rid of are worth keeping.
That's correct, it's my understanding that the commissioners have also looked at those vehicles or at least Mr. Rosinski and they have no interest in any of the vehicles that we're getting rid of.
Mr. Yagowski, is that your question?
No, I was, I was, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yep.
I got a question, well, maybe I'm a little confused here, I know it's up here and two and then we got it down here, is that because of the, just the transfer of the unused salary is?
Right.
Okay.
One's a transfer and one's permission.
Right, well, one question was, was the cars that's been taken care of and I'm sorry, I was reading and how did you explain that?
We're gonna get rid of two cars, we're getting rid of the two vehicles with the highest mileage in the process server fleet and the two people whose positions we're eliminating, we're just, we're gonna give those cars to other process servers, we're getting rid of two cars, basically is the bottom line.
Selling, trading when they.
That's part of our trade package when we buy new cars in April.
Okay, and I think the next question, it can be down, you're requesting a jail deputy, which the salary is thirty?
Thirty-nine, nine fifteen, I believe.
I think I got it right here somewhere, thirty-nine, nine fifty-one. And of course with the, well, maybe, maybe this question should go down further, but I guess I could ask it right now, I see it's sixty-four, seven, thirty-two, fifty-eight for the two jail, for the two process servers, the rest are you requesting into your overtime account, which would be twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents?
Well, potentially, if we need it, yes, we'd like to use it for overtime and that would be overtime in the jail.
Well, that, that stays in the unused salaries.
Yes.
Right, at this time and then we'd have to look at that during budget hearings.
Do you know what the overtime account is in the jail right now, because I can't remember?
Are you talking the number?
Yeah, the amount, okay.
The balance that we have?
No, what, what it started.
I, I.
Or the balance, it, that's okay, I can get with it later.
Hundred and three thousand, I'm sorry.
Hundred and three thousand, what it starts with or what's remaining? Starts, okay, that's, I think that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
May I?
Any other comment? Yep.
The need for the extra jail deputy position, is this caused by the criminal rule 27 or?
Largely in part, it is due to criminal rule 26, yes.
And will this help eliminate overtime as well by having this extra person?
Not completely, but certainly it will help to lower the amount of overtime that we're spending. Currently, we're spending between four and six hours a day, Monday through Friday, providing that it's not a holiday, to facilitate what's needed for criminal rule 26.
And that, that was being paid through overtime?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Sheriff, you want to stay there for a minute, we're gonna talk to the park department, we'll be right back.
Sure.
Request approval to submit a grant application for funds to repair Bluer Park, County Park, which would require council future appropriation of funds in the amount of seventy thousand dollars. The application deadline is March 5th, 2021. Jeremy.
Good evening, council, so I hope you all got my email I sent earlier in the week. So essentially, right now, that park, Bloom County Park was established in the mid nineties, we have a playground there, some shelter, a shelter house, trails, but, and we're still currently running on pit toilets, so we have no flush restrooms or running water for the people out there, so this grant, what I'm hoping to do is put it, replace the playground, it's an old wood structure that's been there since the beginning, so over 20 years, it's starting to rot the posts and, and it's time for replacement. I'm hoping to ask the Healthcare Foundation to fund that portion of the project, which will be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, this would be a completely accessible wheelchair, any disability would be able to use this playground, it would have hoard and place surfacing, so good surfaces for any kind of disability. I also have a commitment from my LaPorte County Park Foundation to put in a septic and real restrooms, so that would be an amount of about fifty thousand dollars, so the total, the total cost for these improvements would be about three hundred and seventy thousand and I'm, I'm hoping the council can, can help us out with the paving of the parking lot, which is currently gravel, that, that causes us problems as well because, as you know, if you're out there for a picnic in the, the shelter house, if you rent that and you come in on a dry summer day, the, the gravel dust blows right into the shelter all over food and everything else, so that, so this would be a, a huge improvement for Bloom that we, it's sorely needed, but it's a wonderful park, but it needs these improvements for, for several reasons, but.
Thank you, Jeremy. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept.
What's that?
I make a motion that we accept, of course, I know it's not.
A motion to support?
I know we're not appropriating, appropriating any money tonight, but I make the motion to accept.
I'll, I'll second.
So a motion by Mr. Mullenhour, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum, are there any questions? Other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank, thank you all and, and thank you for your support of the parks and, and I'll say while, while the sheriff's up there, I want to thank him and his department as well, they've been really good about helping us out with, with some issues we've been having out at some of our other parks and, and their, Sheriff Boyd is always willing to, to jump right in and help us and, and investigate, you know, some vandalism and other things we've had, so I wanted to thank him while he was up there.
Great, thank you, keep up the good work, Jeremy, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, let's go, oh, Sheriff, guess what? We got old business, I'm sorry, now we're gonna talk to EMS, so you might want to sit down, this one. Next time, I forgot, we moved EMS in there, Mr. Rosenbaum showed that to me, so it's always nice to see you though, John.
He's probably happy to stretch your legs out anywhere.
Right. Next item on the agenda is old business, LaPorte County EMS, Andrew McGuire.
Before he speaks, do we have to have a motion to untable?
Mr. President, make a motion to untable it.
And I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum to remove it from the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, it's off the table. Andrew.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So if you recall, this was the, the pay differential between my FTOs in the field when they're acting as management, very rare occurrence, but when a member of management is not on shift for a 24-hour period, we're looking for somebody to step up, they're currently doing the job now, all we're asking for and what they're asking for is to be compensated just that dollar eighty, two dollars an hour pay differential between the two positions.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. President, nothing has changed from the last meeting, I brought up this conversation, I've talked to department heads, department heads go. Department heads go in with their chief deputies and their, and their, their deputies go to, like Indianapolis, go to, you know, conventions, whatever. Other people take over all the time. People aren't vacation, people get sick. This is, again, it's gonna set a precedent that I'm not happy with, because there's no reason that everyone else is gonna say that I won't work the recorder, I won't work the auditor, I won't do this, just because I'm not getting paid today. So this, this puts a bad precedent on the county again.
Any other comments? Mr. Rosenbaum? Oh?
Let her-
Go ahead. Connie?
No, I'm, I'm yielding to you, please. Cause I'll, I'll talk about what I spoke to Barb Mosman after.
I, I would still stand firm on what I said last meeting as well, and I really do believe that we should support this.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yeah, I was the one who asked the table, and I thank everybody for allowing me to do so, so that I could get a little bit more information. One of the concerns that you raised, Mr. Yagowski, is that, are we setting a precedence? And so what I did was I, I spoke with some department heads, and I actually asked Barb Mosman to help me out, and I don't know if she's on there this evening or not. I don't think so.
No.
But one of the things I asked her to do is speak to the other services that are twenty-four hours. So she spoke to corrections, she spoke to juvenile services, we spoke with the sheriff's office, we spoke with nine-one-one. And rarely do we have a similar situation under the way this is done. There are different protocols in different departments. Sometimes the departments can get away with a phone call for a supervisor, but in some cases with EMS, I do not believe that they can get away with a phone call. I believe that the, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, they actually need to physically be there on the, involved. And therefore, I think that this is a unique situation, and any other department that thinks that they can do this without coming before us is wrong. And I would state that right now, and that would be part of the resolution, that this is a unique to this department only, as a different, unique situations. And I do not believe that it would be creating a bad precedence. And therefore, I too, and if we're ready, I would like to make a motion to support the, the increase in pay.
And I would second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions? Mr. Yagowski.
Again, I, I, I understood, cause I let, Mike Rosenbaum and I talked about this. He picked twenty-four hours, I picked every department, and I went through all the departments, and they were not happy with the situation that was going on. One, two, you mean to tell me that if that person not sees acting foreman, that they, they cannot do anything that day if they're out there for a call? Cause you stated that you have to be an acting foreman to do, make that call. They can't call you on the phone and ask you.
At two or three in the morning?
Anytime. I, sir, I get phone calls all the time, my work is still, I got phones, I have two phones. I get called all the time, and we, we make tech actions when we have to. You cannot do the same thing? Or anybody, or your assistant can't do it?
Well, absolutely, and if it's, if it's a large-scale situation, absolutely. We receive-
So I meant the statement I'm making, that they have to be, there's a wrong statement. I just, anybody management can make those decisions, they have to be called and they talk to that. It's, it's the way we work in the world here.
Can I finish my statement?
Sure, absolutely.
So, if it's a large-scale situation, absolutely, we, we receive phone calls around the clock, myself or Eric.
Absolutely.
If it's a shift-level thing, we follow the chain of command strictly. So if a shift-level issue, there's an issue with a physician, there's a narcotic issue, there's an accident that happened, something needs to be, something needs to take place right there at that moment, they don't have time for me to come in or hand over the phone, it can't be handed over the phone. Needs to be handled by somebody that's on duty right then and there. That's the whole point behind this.
And in the past, there's people have done those work, and they've done that work, so, okay.
Any other comments? Mr. Molnauer.
I'd just like to comment that I also spoke with Director Barb Houston, or Barb, Barb Mosman at the Human Resource Office, and she, basically, like Councilman Rosenbaum related what she had to say. We know EMS is a unique office. Last month I, or, last month I commented about when I took over sheriff, corporals weren't compensated, but in, this is in the jail. We had to rank corp sergeant and corporals, but corporals weren't compensated. So the council at that time, at budget time, gave me approval or put into the budget where we compensated them for taking the responsibility during the shift. And, and I'm sure Mr. McGuire, or Sheriff Boyd, or any other department head would certainly take the call, but that's what we have rank structure for, and to eliminate some of that. And sometimes the decision needs to be made immediately, many times. And I just think that with that responsibility, they need to be compensated, and it's a dollar eighty an hour, and it, it's only when they're on, when they, when there's not another supervisor that's there. So I, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would like to thank Mr. Molnauer for his memory, because that's exactly right, and I appreciate the fact that he points that out. And I think I asked Mr. McGuire at the last meeting, what do you estimate total this is gonna cost?
We ran the numbers for one year from twenty-nineteen to the beginning of twenty-twenty, and it happened eleven times and cost us merely seven hundred dollars.
Right.
Now, different situations, different times.
But it's gonna be, it's not gonna be seventy thousand.
No, it's a very minimal amount, very minimal amount of money.
My, my point is, and I think I hear the same thing from Councilwoman Camarosa, when we have good people, let's treat them like good people. They're employees, let's try to reward them stepping up. And if we end up doing it in a couple more departments, I'll feel fine with that. We don't, we're not the highest-paid county offices in this area. And we lose some county employees to neighboring counties, because they can make more money. And we invest a lot of money in, in getting them up to standard, and then they go somewhere else. You've, you've seen that, haven't you?
We are currently losing several employees right now. I'm losing four paramedics right now going to neighboring communities.
And that's my point, is when we, we get employees, we ought to try to take care of them and keep them, because it costs us so much to train them.
Absolutely.
So I will be a hundred percent in support of this.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Port County Sheriff. Come on down. Requesting permission to spend forty thousand dollars from the asset forfeiture account and twenty-six thousand five hundred from the commissary account to match a grant for body cameras in the amount of sixty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Molnauer?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Camarosa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. LaPorte County Sheriff requests to transfer unused salary from account one-oh-one-six-eight process server to account one-oh-one-six-six jailers to fund the position that we talked, gave permission for earlier, not to exceed sixty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. What's your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Gardner?
Second.
Seconded by?
Mike Molnauer.
Mr. Molnauer? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next, the LaPorte County Sheriff's requests an additional appropriation from Emergency Relief Fund eleven-eight-six for replacement of the Integrator Security System. This was, there was an emergency approval on this for four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. This is the program that runs the cameras, the doors, their interlocking doors and everything inside the jail. So, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve, and after I have a comment.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Camarosa. Comment?
Yeah, I've had the pleasure of having a conversation, not always a great one, when you ask people, can we spend four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars? And why? This, initially, they were trying, I wanna make sure the public knows this, initially, there was an attempt to get various bids, and they did get a couple bids. And just as they're getting through this bidding process, this thing is just deteriorating day by day, and it's not like it's something that you can get by without fixing. And so therefore, it became an emergency repair. And so the lowest bidder, I believe, was the one that was chosen. But there was an effort to first start, to try and get, go through the proper bidding process.
Thank you.
And in fact, we have been since invoiced, and while we originally asked for an amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, the invoices have come in, and it's four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars, so it is less than what we had asked for.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is LaPorte County Sheriff requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat for merit pension. This is, he's coming before us for half of the actuaries' projection. Is that, am I saying that right?
The county's contribution for-
For the county's contribution. He's asking for half of it in the amount of six-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand eight-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I make, I'll make the second just for, so we can ask questions, and that's what's hopefully we get.
We have a second by Mr. Yagowski, motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments at this time, Mr. Yagowski?
Mr. President. My stance is the same as I stance was last year at this time. We have bent over backwards with the sheriffs, both Mr. Molnauer and the current sheriff. And again, we were putting all the money up front, the million dollars up front, to get extra interest. We don't ever get any benefit from doing that. That was the idea, we've tried it before, when we made those motions, that we were gonna do it, that we were gonna get benefit from it. This, this, this merit pension is not in the negative, not in the hole. It's for additional dollars. This is not even, there is no fear of it going in the hole. Last year, I did ask the ordinance to change it from the amount they asked again to five-hundred-thousand. We proved it last year with, actually, it was a million. One-time payment, wasn't two. But again, I'd like to hear the sheriff, why we don't get a benefit from the, from the, where the resources come in to pay this. Everything's improved, your interest is fantastic, and yet we keep asking for increases.
Chief, you can answer that.
Right, we're seeing the increases for several reasons. One, we've, we've increased the merit division over the last ten years by six employees. And then, two, the county has provided us with yearly raises, it has increased. I, I think that by putting this money up front and getting the interest, it's keeping the increases, although they are increases, small and manageable, and we're not seeing an exponential jump in the county's contribution every year. We can keep them manageable, I think that benefits everybody. Second of all, our pension plan actually pays out more per year than what the county contributes. So the pension plan, although it is very solvent and very healthy, it does pay out more every year than the county actually contributes. And we need to continue that to keep the pension fund solvent and healthy for ten, twenty, thirty years down the road, so all of us can benefit from it, and rightfully so.
I agree, Mr. Hey, so what the, what the problem is, and we said before, look, you've got a great program, it's paying well. If at some point this starts not hurting us, because it, it has progressively grown, progressively grown with your interest.
Over the past couple of years, absolutely.
Absolutely. So with that statement, we don't pay into any of the funds like, like our other county players do, or any other type of pension programs happen. So right now, we're still not asking for that. You've got a great program, I, I believe we're doing fantastic, but at this time, I cannot support the six-ninety-seven, I can go back to the five-hundred thousand that we've always agreed to, because we are continuously improving the program.
Right, absolutely.
More than, more than you're taking out that part.
Right, absolutely. But the, the numbers that we provided you, the six-ninety-seven, eight-sixteen, that's dictated by the actuary, and those are the requirements that we have to meet. Mr. Molnauer can agree with that as well.
I understand the agreement, I met with your actuary, he's been in many of our meetings.
Right.
But that's still, your increases have taken care of the increases from your interest. You have high interest coming in, your increase of that has paid for it. Right, that's what, that's what he gave me the facts last time he was here. The interest that-
Yeah, the interest that we earn our pension, true, it, it does help the overall cost of-
It doesn't make it go down. It makes it, it makes it solvent, and it's been solvent.
Right.
Right.
Right, but again, that number, we don't come up with this number that we're requesting. That's what, the number that we're requesting tonight is provided to us at the beginning of every year by our actuary.
Agreed, I met him before, but it's somewhat of a wish list, because, because of the fact of it is, because this would be the ideal thing, to keep raising it, keep raising it, keep raising it. But we are still paying for the officers that have their, the pension program. We, with the interest that we've accumulated, we are taking care of those. I'm sorry, excuse me.
Terry.
Terry, I'm sorry, apologize, I apologize, I'm sorry, sorry, I lost, excuse me, I lost. So anyways, with the, with the increase of interest, especially with, when we were paying these, every year with the million dollars up front, you were more than paying for the officers that, that the increase of their, over the, over their actual pay in to pay out. We were actually, we, we took care of those costs. That's why everybody agreed last year to make it the same amount of money. I just cannot see the increase. Yeah, in a perfect world, it'd be great, but it's, but it's, it's a bonus, it's not-
You're right, and, and all I can say to that is that, you know, again, these numbers are provided to us every year by our-
Of course, and the real world, he, he says, I love to have this. His word to me was, I'd love to have this, but, I understand. Cause I did talk to him numerous times in the last couple of years. He's a great-
But, but the number we're providing you is exactly what the contribution needs to be. The law says that, that contribution shall be made.
Yeah.
I said, the law says that I shall, I shall make the amount here, if we may have to find other purposes, if we, if it ever goes in the hole. But right now, it's not going in the hole. You have a perfectly solvent plan, nothing wrong with the plan, your interest is taking care of that.
And, and isn't that everybody's goal, to have a solvent plan?
Yeah, it's perfect. In the real world, it's perfect, right, yes.
That's actually a compliment.
That's absolutely, because we've done, because the council-
Explain that than explain why it's not in the hole.
Because the council's done that, Sheriff, I totally agree. We, we've done a fantastic job of working with you to increase those numbers.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that was what the purpose of it was, and that's all.
All right, Mr. Rosenbaum?
So is it your recommendation that we change the number that's on here? So I'm gonna ask, is the number that we fully funded right away, or do we split it in half to that million-dollar number?
I'd like to do, I'd like to do the million with, with the, with the whole-year payment right now, and then they get the benefit of the interest that they're doing fantastic on. Give some twenty-seven percent return on some.
I will amend my motion from the six-ninety-seven, eight-sixteen, fifty, to a million-dollar one-time payment.
I don't believe it was advertised for a million dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can only do less? We can't do more?
It was not advertised. I mean, let's pay us that due now, we could pay it for next month, and we can just say we're in favor of it. Can roll it for the next month to the agenda.
So then I will change my motion to be in support of putting a million dollars in a million dollars in to the, into the fund.
And that, I, I want you to know that the law requires us to meet that minimum contribution and that minimum contribution is the $1,395,000. The law requires that, otherwise if we don't meet that minimum standard for, within three years, then the plan can go defunct. There's, there's minimum requirements that have to be met and this year that 1.395.
Can we have the actual, the person who created, who calculated the number with us next month?
That's, we can get somebody up here, but yeah, that's the McCready.
I just want to, I just want to make sure everybody will have an explanation of it or if we can get an explanation from them in advance, what the minimum requirement is, why it is such, and so then I guess, do we table this then or just?
No.
Where do we go with this?
He's asked to change his motion, so.
Hang on a second.
So I have a question I wanted to ask Mr. DiMartino. Can you look into it and find out legally? Because if they're saying that legally we have to provide this dollar amount, then, you know, can you look into finding out exactly what it is that we can't, we are obligated to contribute and then go from there?
Chief Deputy, can you provide me the information from the state? Yep. Absolutely.
And find out if it's mandated or if it's something, or if it's like what Mr. Yagowski's saying that it's a wish list. I mean, you know, if he's saying wish list and they're saying mandate, someone has to look into it for us.
Okay, it'll be done.
Mr. Yagowski?
Yes, so just let me make clear, what's the best interest that you've heard? Because I heard some really good numbers the last time they were up here. What's, do you remember? Interest you're receiving?
Interest receiving on our pension over the last, well, over the last year, in 2020 it did well. I think we were up to about 23%.
That's right, I said 27, but maybe I misspoke, okay, let's go with it.
There's years that we've been negative as well too.
No, there has been negative years.
If you'd let me speak, if you'd allow me to ask a question, because you're asking a question that's about investments.
Yeah, but hang on just one second, I got one more point to make if you don't mind. Sure. So if, if we gave $1 million and you take 23% of that, we are giving more money than that million plus, so we do actually make the quoted number that we're asking for.
I get where you're coming from, Mr. Yagowski. They don't look at it as like we're going to make.
They don't want to look at it, but he, but that is actual, our donation is 1 million plus a 23%, so we are more than taking care of the pension program.
Well, we can't guarantee that we're going to make 23% this year.
Okay, even if we go 15%, we're still making more than that. Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, I just would say that I, I don't know what that fund is invested in, but it could very well be invested in common stocks and past performance is no guarantee of future returns. I wouldn't put you at the spot, but do you know what it's invested in? Because if they had that type of return, it probably, if it hasn't had that type of historic return, it's probably not going to have that type of future return.
Right, it's in stocks and bonds, correct?
We'll try, we'll try and get the gentleman or lady here this next month. I just want to say a couple things. One, the county does contribute to every county employee that's in perf. So the county does pay into every person that is in perf in the county. I'm not saying all of them are, but the county does make a contribution to every employee. I think earlier you stated that. I said, no I didn't, sir. If you're going to state it, then, Mr. President, I stated that they pay into their own program too.
But they make a contribution with it.
That's all I said.
Okay.
I did state that with the sheriff. The next thing that I want to state is being served many years on the Pension Oversight Commission down in Indianapolis, though, this is the way I see it and haven't been dealing with pensions for a long time. If we short this, and I, and I understand that sometimes you've got to short it, but you still owe that, at some point in time, that has to be made up because the actuaries, this isn't just for the people that are retired, this is for the people that are going to retire and to keep the plan healthy. So if anything that we short now, we, we are charging future councils with, that they may have to make that up at, at a future time. So with that, Mr. Ro, Mr. whatever, Sue, Sue, what's Sue's say about this? That's what I want to know. Anyway, Mr. Molnauer?
Okay, I'd just like to make one brief comment. What you just said, Councilman Novak, President Novak, is correct. I remember, it was prior to me being sheriff, so it would have been prior to 2007, that it was shorted, it wasn't funded completely for one or two years and Chief Hig, Hig made the comment that three years, and that's correct, you can't go more than three years and you're going to have to make it up anyway. And the other point is that he made, it is, shall be paid. So the word shall is in there because I know we've had these comments many times, like every year, so.
Mr. President?
That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Yagowski, real quick on Mr. Molnauer, he's absolutely right. What we did was we didn't pay the money at the beginning of the year, we paid the money at the end of the year.
There was one year.
It was, I'm just telling you, it was just Mr. Arnold was up here and we couldn't, we, that was when we had no tax dollars coming in. We did not pay the money at the beginning, but we paid the money at the end of the year. We did not, just not pay money.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to table it so that we can address it all in full next month. It'll give our attorney time to have the paperwork, to review it and advise us accordingly.
So a motion to table, is there a second?
First name?
Who's the second person?
Second.
Oh, second comment.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Two nays.
I think I have to abstain.
He does.
If I can vote on that, I'll.
His pension?
No, yeah.
All right, so motion to table till next month. Is, you got, we got time, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yep.
The earlier the better, but.
Thank you. You're all done, Sheriff.
There's an interest.
Yeah. Um, next item is the surveyor here for his annual Surveyor's Corner Perpetuation Fund in the amount of $59,895 not to exceed.
I'll be, I'll be quick. This year we did kind of, after last year we got a, our half our fund, so we whittled it down this year to something we might come back till July, but with that in mind, we were not at 59,000. We have the opportunity this year, the Indiana Michigan State Line is going to be done with DLZ, a contractor through the Indiana State Line Commission. There are 16 state line miles in Laporte County. In between those, there's a whole different system of section corners, there's 25 miles that we have, 25 corners, 25 half miles that we can dovetail on their project with a saving. So I put the $30,000 into this request, knowing I was only going to ask for half here, but now it's at 59,000 that we can, as they are moving down the state line, they can do our section corners also, which are really tough and haven't been touched since 1836. The state line is a different system in 1827 when they moved it from just north of Laporte, 10 miles north of Michigan, so we could have Lakefront Eckers. So that's why this is 59,000 and change because we would typically would have asked for 29,000, but we have the opportunity to work with DLZ to do our 25 corners on our state line while they're walking down the line.
That'll really help down the road, right?
Uh, there's lots of things and not in Laporte County, mostly St. John Elkhart County where there is a road on the state line and they have jurisdictional issues about what happens on that road and whether in Michigan or whether in Indiana. But since the State Line Commission reconfigured, they elected me as chairman, Senator Dorial got us the funds and we moved very quickly before these funds expired to release this contract to DLZ. We are lucky that they're starting at mile zero on the beach of Lake Michigan and they're moving east, so Laporte County is the first county to get done.
And, and Michiana Shores has a road right down the state line?
Michiana Shores has a piece of the road right down the state line.
Definitely. What's your pleasure? Did we already motion a second?
No, not yet. Motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Rosenbaum?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Molnauer? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Laporte County Assessor requesting to spend from Sales Disclosure Fund for two desktop computers in the amount of $6,500. Motion by Mr. Yagowski?
I'll second it then a comment.
Seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Sorry. Okay, also I just want to make sure, we just read that it's for two, two desktop computers. Desktop computers don't cost 6,500, they call it, it's a lot less. But in the description that you gave us, so that the public also hears it, that there's also software costs that go into, putting into these computers and that is why it is not to exceed 6,500.
Correct, and plus, I don't think I'm getting, she, she in for the larger screens?
She had a larger screen so that you don't have to pay for two screens.
Right, I'm not getting the larger screen, so that's going to be less.
You can have this one because I can't see over the top. We moved it over for you.
And that fund, last I checked, had around $93,000 in it.
Great, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the EMS one, we already did under old business lex. Next is the Laporte County Clerk requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat or General for remodeling, updating of the clerk's office in the amount of $30,800 and I'm here to tell you, that's one office that needs remodeling.
Motion to approve.
Which account? Which account?
Which account, Terry?
I would prefer it come out of Riverboat.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Cunningham. Questions, comments? Mr. Cunningham?
I'd like Heather just to give you a little bit of detail of what she's thinking, so.
All right, she'll get a chance to talk. Mr. Molnauer, did you have a question before she speaks?
Yeah, just, well, probably you're going to complain in there, I just had some question on him, I couldn't find the.
Microphone. I couldn't locate right now the sheet that she gave us. She's got this booklet right here. Oh, okay. I just had some questions on, I noticed some points on there that, is the county Maintenance Department going to be doing any of this work at all?
That I don't know. I, I believe that most of it is contracted out.
This was, just for you to know, this was coordinated through Larry for them to do it because it's, it's kind of in it. Our Maintenance Department isn't necessarily doing it, but I think they're subbing it out, but our Maintenance Department was very involved in what needed to be done.
The estimate in front of you is from our, is from Larry.
Right, yeah. Right, I just, that's part of it, I just wondered if they were doing any of the demolition? They're, they're not?
I, I can find out, I don't know.
That I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Molnauer, I talked to Larry, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't ask that question.
I didn't either.
I did talk to him, but I apologize, you have a good question.
I know they're busy with the building over here on Monroe Street, but you know, if they, if there's something that isn't real pressing, like tear up the old carpet and things like that, that can save some money, I just thought, we usually do that if, if at all possible, so.
Larry's pretty frugal when it comes to that kind of stuff.
I, I believe the conversation is that if they're going to, they're going to need to move the entire clerk's office out of the space. So in order to get it all done at once, these prices were put in and whatever they can do, they will do, but it's just to get the contractors in because there's some work there people can't do.
But they will do some, are you saying?
It's my understanding that they will attempt to do whatever they can. I believe the carpet removals could be one of them, but I don't know more, and moving the furniture. But beyond that, I'm not certain how, how much is going to be done, but that was the conversation I had with him about a week ago, a week ago Friday.
Mr. President?
Mr. Yagowski?
Terry, you want to make a motion? Could you, could you add with your motion?
I already did make.
Yeah, could you, could you, Terry, could you add with the motion that if we could try to do the work, we'll try to do the work, or some of the work ourselves?
I was under the assumption that Larry's department was doing.
I was, I was too, Mr. Mr., I'm sorry, can we at least include that in your motion?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yep, I got it. I just sent him a message to see if I can get an answer from him, so.
All right.
He changed his motion to include the person.
So he changed it and you seconded it?
I was, um.
Mike Molnauer?
No, Earl Cunningham seconded it the first time, so if he has agreed to change.
You okay with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Hearing none, Heather, did you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I don't think so.
Read the book.
Yeah, read, read the book.
Read the book.
I, I know the staff is, is very appreciative of this. They've been working in some pretty, pretty rough conditions for quite some time, so.
When you sit through the meeting the whole time and we don't want to not allow you to talk. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that's out of the Riverboat.
Yes.
With that, that concludes everything, thank you.
Thank you.
Any council or attorney comments?
Mr. President?
One at a time?
Yes. Okay. With this conditions that, I know last month I asked to, if there's a way to work things out, apparently there's not because of the lawsuits that were filed and everything. I was president during two of the filings of, of Mr. Hinchman and Carol McDaniel, thank you. And those were filings that would happen because of the state came down with a ruling and there was missing, there was two interpretations of those rulings. Mr. Davis said, I've gotten record of him doing this before the actual, before he was elected, these emails are coming out, because I started reading all these emails, because he's been sending them to me, so I appreciate it. And so this was, there was, there was actually emails prior to being sworn in the office. Everybody's got, everybody that doesn't understand, you have homeowners insurance, that is, that is allowed to have, you're allowed to claim this if, if it was unsuccessful in the lawsuit for, for getting an attorney. With the fact that the known matter is that we, we, the council actually have made those decisions in the past, it's precedent that the council does. We have a $300,000 stop loss for insurance, so it does not get, it cannot go in front of the insurance, it goes in front of the council and we have in the past proved both of those expenditures. I'm just saying, it's my personal opinion, I was hoping it would not have gone this way, but I think it's an individual between the two individuals, I know Mr. Freeman's paying for his, I would think Mr. Davis had to pay for his, and my opinion, again, only my opinion, I think that we may move on, hope we move on, but either which way, that this, this matter would come in front of the council, it would not go into the insurance policy.
Any other council comment?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
I would just want to point out the inconsistency of, we couldn't move on a resolution because we just received it this afternoon and 10 minutes later we voted on a resolution that we just received today and approved it, thank you.